Testing one, two, three. This will be the May 18th, 2016 regular city council meeting.
Hey, ma'am.
You know what I'd like to call the order for regular council meeting in the City of Satellite Beach, May 18th, 2016, approximately 7:00 p.m. Please join council and augury for a moment of silence in the box.
Please stand and join a moment of silence. Thank you, and the pledge allegiance?
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda, item three, presentation of proclamation recognizing May 15th through to 21st, 2016 as emergency medical service week. Councilman Vice Mayor Breimer?
Thank you, ma'am.
Dave, good morning.
Good evening, sir.
How are you, sir?
All right. We see the citizens of Satellite Beach have come forward to our efforts and the department's efforts also.
Read into the microphone, please.
I want to recognize your efforts, your department's efforts, and the appreciation of our citizens towards everything you guys do. This is an official proclamation of the City of Satellite Beach, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and since 1984, the Satellite Beach Fire Department has provided advanced life support, medical care 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and/or the City of Satellite Beach Fire Department also provides community paramedic services that provide preventive medical care and would support to reduce 911 incidents and improve the health of our community, and whereas the City of Satellite Beach Fire Department and paramedics undergo thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas the City Council of Satellite Beach recognizes the value and accomplishments of the Satellite Beach Fire Department EMS providers. Now, on behalf of Mayor Catino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, he hereby proclaims May 15th through the 21st of 2016 as Emergency Medical Services Week, signed by the mayor as of today, May 18th, 2016. Thank you, sir. Would you like to share any words with our citizens?
No, we're just proud that we do what we do for the citizens. We're proud that we do the job that we do. I can't tell you, of the 15 guys we have down there, I don't think any of them isn't proud to do what they do for the citizens and the way they do it. And I think it shows in our survival rates and the way these guys treat the public and treat their patients.
You guys are first class, we appreciate everything. Thank you, sir.
Moving on to agenda item four, citizens' comments. This are comments on non-agenda items. Floor is open. Here and none. Come back to council. City council comments?
I would just echo, you know, our town hall meetings are going well. We did have a few that braved the rain last night, was not actually the best out there for that, but we had a good showing, and I think a few of them talked afterwards of how appreciative they were of us coming out and talking to them and speaking to them. So, I think it's going great. I like the idea. I think, I kind of made a comment last night, I said, actually, I think our best town hall meeting is the last one. Mainly because as we go along, we pick up things at each meeting from citizens, that we pick up, you know, another question or another comment, so that by the time we get to the last one, you know, even us are more informed, or we know more about what the citizens are talking about or what interests them. So, it is a good learning experience for us, but I think they're going well, and I really like them.
No, Mr. Mayor, I attended the meeting last night as well, and just want to thank Courtney and her team for putting everything together the way that you guys do. It turned out really well, and glad to be a part of it, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
I just have a personal comment.
I'd like to thank the city manager and Ed Schultz, our IT staff person, for pursuing this portable sound system. It has made all the difference, and we have finally figured out the puzzle, and now we have a setup so that I can control the volume for each speaker individually. And it makes the difference between being included and being shut out, so I'm very good. Thank you for keeping at it.
On the 5th, I attended the National Day of Prayer breakfast. On the 10th and the 24th, I did both of the town hall meetings, and I echo the comments that were made by all the council people as far as the success of these, the turnout. On the 12th, I attended the Citizens Police Academy graduation, which was pretty interesting. That was a 13-week course that was offered by our police department, and they had 20-some-odd people in that class, it was pretty neat. And on Saturday morning at 2:00 in the morning, I was at the Honor Flight send-off where I was part of the group that saw off 25 veterans that went to Washington, D.C., and I've been doing that for a while, but it was great because General Montief was there, so I got to talk to him, and I thanked him for the relationship that we have with Patrick Air Force Base under his command now, and I thanked him for the bleachers that we got and for the P4 initiatives that we've been working with them on, and he told me that the mayor's breakfast is tomorrow, I believe, and you're going to that, so it's all good. You know, we've got a great relationship with Patrick Air Force Base, so it's moving in the right direction, that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Were there any square letters?
There were 21 World War II veterans and four Korean War veterans. Six of them were in wheelchairs, three of them had canes, and the rest of them were like, there was a 90-some-odd-year-old guy that was walking faster than I can walk. And that's fast.
I also attended National Prayer Breakfast. I went to the town hall meetings and the Citizens Police Academy, and I got to say this about the Citizens Police Academy, it's pretty amazing. And the one common thing I heard everybody get up there and talks, and I never realized how much they do, and it was this common thread between everybody there. I think the way they handled it, the way they put that program on was fabulous, and everybody that got up there and spoke, you know, spoke very, very highly and thought it was great, so, thank you. Okay, moving on, any other council comments? Moving on to agenda item six, city manager's report.
Mayor, on May 28th, we do have a police athletic league, and they will be holding their mini-bunko night on this day. It is an adults-only game, only because it's a dice game, and that starts at 7:00 p.m. and it will cost $15 per person for advance tickets, and you can get that at the Satellite Beach Recreation Office, or it's $20 at the door. On June 5th through June 11th, the Recreation Department and the Satellite Beach Library will be holding a story walk from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the sports park, and basically what they're doing is taking a page of a book and like making a demonstration of the book along our parking area and around the pond, and the book that they're going to be doing at first is Duck on a Bike by David Shannon, so that we'll be looking forward to that. The Sea Turtle Preservation Society will be offering a guided sea turtle walk in Satellite Beach in June and July, or where they're signing people up, and they're taking reservations, and they're accepting them now, and you can call, the number is in my report. The Organization for the Annual 21-Day Salute to the Flag has begun, so Dick Pang and his team are posting flyers throughout the city and are looking for volunteers to help, so if you're interested in doing that, you can call City Hall, and we will give you that information, or you can look at my report for those numbers. Basically, in this, the 21-day salute, the flags are taken up and down from June 14th through July 4th, from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30, so they'll come in at 7:30, put them up, and then take them down in the evening, and that's 21 flags. So, it's quite an endeavor. I have received two complimentary letters from residents regarding our fire department. I also received an email complimenting our beachcaster. We also received an email thanking the city for the Cinnamon Park playground replacement. I have had a lot of comments on that, about how great the equipment that we ordered was. We also want to remind everybody, last day of school is Tuesday, May 24th, so please be mindful that the children will be out and playing, and while non-parents are raving about the fact that they won't have school zones anymore, parents will be crying secretly because they won't have time to themselves anymore. The, my evaluations have been completed, I put the score in there, the average score was 144.6 out of a total of 150 points, so I would like to thank you all for your time in doing those and providing your comments, which I will take to heart. I also wanted to comment that the Citizens Police Academy, we already have seven people sign up for next year, so we have a waiting list already for the next year, so I think that's pretty neat. It was a big hit, and they did a great job in it, and so we're pretty proud of it. Suzanne did actually take the Citizens Police Academy, so she is a graduate. And that is all I have.
Great, thank you very much, Courtney. Any questions for the city manager?
Yeah, Paul Stone, who are all the graduates.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And John Stone, I think, was also.
Yep, John was in, John was.
Great. Any other questions for Courtney? Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item seven, approve the budget calendar there for FY 1617.
Thank you. We, every year, bring the budget calendar for your approval. This will be the budget process for the fifth, the creation of the 1617 budget. I just want to point out that you will have a special council meeting on July 28th, 2016, so you'll need to make sure that you can attend that meeting as the tentative miller rate setting, and where we basically present the budget to you. So, I just want to make sure that you all are able to do that. If you are, then we are requesting your approval of the budget calendar.
Council, if you please look at these dates, is there any of these dates that concern now that are in conflict?
I'm going to be out of town on the 21st of September, I have a pension trust fund meeting.
Any other problem?
Right, it's, I just want to figure.
So, the dates are aligned with everybody? Okay. Do I have?
I'll make a motion to accept the council budget calendar for 2016, 2017.
Second. Motion by Council Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion, yes. Lenore?
Council McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, passes. Thank you, Courtney, and the government staff. Moving on to agenda item eight, discuss take action on agreement between the City of Satellite Beach and Waste Management for Solid Waste Services.
Thank you, Mayor. We are going to be presenting to you the contract, and before that, I just want to make sure that you knew the process. We did issue the RFP on January 8th. We did have a selection committee which reviewed the proposals from two firms, which was Waste Pro and Waste Management. The selection committee approved to negotiate with Waste Management, and the city council provided your final approval on April 6th. Since then, we have been moving through a negotiation process, and we have come to a final agreement, and Suzanne will go through what that agreement consists of with this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. What I'm going to present to you tonight is a brief overview of the highlights of the solid waste contract. They were explained primarily in the agenda memo you have before you, but I'm going to go through some of the highlights for purposes of this meeting, once I do the quicker rate. Okay. So, first of all, we discussed getting rates for either a seven or a 10-year contract, that is what the proposals, proposers responded to, and we do have a 10-year term in this contract. I'm sorry, neglected to mention, folks from Waste Management are here in the audience, as you are all aware. We have Deana Ryder Hicks and George Glecko, and they're here to answer any additional questions if they come up. One of the key things that we focused on, based on your direction, was to make sure that service levels and days of service would stay the same for our residents, so that is preserved within this contract. You'll see the garbage is still Tuesday, Friday, yard trash is Monday, as is recycling. Residential customers will continue to have three carts, as they always have, two for their trash and yard waste, and one for recycling. One thing that is different is that many residents still have a 64-gallon cart for recycling. They will now have the option to exchange that for a 96-gallon if they're recycling more than they're putting in their trash bins, for example, trash carts. There are several items we wanted to mention here related to the services specifically, and these are based on things that we knew were important to the residents, as well as things that, you know, we have, we discussed with you previously, we've heard complaints about. So, the first thing we wanted to make sure was preserved in this new contract is the fact that for residential customers who hire a landscaping professional to do some work in their yard and put those piles out by the curb, those will be picked up by Waste Management in the normal process, so it's not a special call, and it will be picked up. That's important, that's also fairly unique to our city, that's not something that's done everywhere else, from, is our understanding. We've also had, we want to make sure we preserved, or made it very clear, how long it would take for special pickups for certain things. So, I've got them listed in the PowerPoint there, but those are things like if someone puts out an appliance, which is what we call white goods, if they have e-waste or electronics that they put out, typical bulk waste, so that could be, you know, a piece of furniture, something like that. All of those things, including large-volume yard trash, so the bigger piles that can't be picked up during the normal route, and for the commercial folks, the commercial bulk waste, for all of those types of trash, they're going to be picked up within three business days or the next Friday after notification, so that's very clear in the contract. Additionally, one of the things that was previously a service provided, but we made sure to memorialize, is the fact that for disabled and elderly residents, they have an option to not only change, change or exchange their cart sizes based on their needs, but also to receive either backdoor or sideyard pickup at no additional cost. Additionally, one of the things we wanted to make sure to give residents an option on is the exchange of the carts based on, there could be a variety of factors. One of those might be aesthetics. Sometimes people say, you know, my cart looks dirty, or I don't like the faded color on the lid, I'd like a cleaner-looking one. So, we provided for a one-time change of a cart for that kind of a reason, at no cost to the resident. If they do that repeatedly, though, there will be a $25 charge for a delivery exchange fee, is what it's called. Same thing would apply for those who want to change for capacity reasons. So, if you need a smaller trash cart or a larger recycle bin, a cart, or vice versa, that will be accommodated. Again, first time, no charge, subsequent requests will be a charge. The second bullet there talks about if you have the two trash carts and you would like to get a third one, because you have, you know, more people in your house, or whatever the reason might be, you can purchase a third cart for $70, and that is something that has always, as far as I know, been the case here anyway. So, that's not unusual or a different charge, that is just a charge. I put the comment in there about no additional monthly service fee, because in the proposal process, one of the things that both vendors came back with was if you had an extra cart, you would pay an additional monthly charge beyond the regular monthly rate. That was something that we negotiated away, and so that is not included, but it is something that you see in the industry that's being added more and more, that additional charge for that. So, we do not have that in our case. Additionally, we know how important it is to, you know, keep the CNG trucks, the compressed natural gas trucks, running in the city, and in our negotiations, Waste Management was willing, they already serviced us with quite a few of those trucks, but they were willing to take another three of the diesel trucks in our city offline to put in the sort of, the CNG trucks for us. So, that was good, and they're going to do that next year. Final few things about the service. One of the aspects that was very important to us was to build accountability into the contract and our relationship from a staff perspective, so you'll see when you look at the contract that there is actually a section dedicated to how we handle complaints, and one of those things that we're going to do is hold a monthly meeting with Waste Management. And in that monthly meeting, we're going to cover all of the complaints and requests that they've received. We're going to do that based on a review of two reports that we'll get. One report will come from Waste Management's, out of their internal system that they use to, you know, take in calls and emails and things like that, and the other will be through the Track Easy web portal that is on the city's website. So, we'll have two reports, we'll look at that, we'll talk about those together, and we have several pages in the contract that allow for administrative or liquidated damages, and they're for all kinds of things. But essentially, there are expectations of service that are put forth in the contract. If the contractor fails to meet those expectations, we have an option to essentially fine them and hold them accountable for those things. That's in addition, that's something we didn't really have robustly previously, so it's a pretty significant change to our arrangement. Now, a few things about the rates I want to go through for you. First of all, the rates are based on two components. There's what's called a collection component and a fuel component. You can see the percentages up there, but essentially, the collection component is 90% of the rate, and the fuel component is 10% of the rate. I tell you that because I'm going to also talk about how the rates will be adjusted annually, based on essentially CPI-like indexes, but I want you just to keep in mind that, you know, 90% collection, 10% fuel. So, what we've negotiated is that the collection portion of the rate will be, has the potential to be adjusted annually, and it will be based on what happens with what's called the garbage and trash collection index, or GNT. That is a different index than what has previously been used, which I'll explain on a further slide. But part of our contract basically says that we're going to look at that index on an annual basis and see what that average was. We will apply that to our existing rates, however, it can't go over 3%, and there will be, there will be a minimum increase of 1% on that portion of the rates. Moving to the fuel portion of the rate, that 10% figure, previously, our rates were based on diesel costs, but since we're using CNG trucks, it didn't make sense to continue along that path. So, the fuel portion of the rate will be adjusted, increased or decreased, as the case may be, based on the Henry Hug Natural Gas Price Index, which is historically a lot more stable than the diesel-fuel indexes, which you probably are familiar with. Overall, so getting to the bottom line, the rates for the starting year of this contract look as follows. We have for our residential monthly rates, we're moving from a current rate of $15.59 that each resident pays to a $14.38 rate. That's all, and that's collection and fuel component combined, so you can see that that's a 7.76% decrease. For the commercial rate, there are a lot of factors to what the commercial customers are charged, but the easiest way to look at it is at a per-cubic-yard cost. Our current rate for that is $6.14, going down to $5.69, which gives us a 7.33% decrease. So, all in all, it was a good, good result, and it was something that we fought hard to accomplish. Now, back to the rates, I want to talk a little bit more about the way things used to be, and then show you a comparison of how the rates ended up and how they could have, could have been had we not made these changes. So, previously, we were using what's called the Urban Consumers CPI Index. It did not have a cap, so where we have a 3% now, cap now, there was no cap on that application of that index, and you can see, I took the average annual increase of the past 10 years or so, and that was about 4.5% for an annual increase, so our 3% competitively is better than that. So, the two examples I'm going to show you on the next slide are, the first one is new contract rates, so those will be more like a reality scenario, but this is all a sample, so I'll talk through that with you. The second example is, bottom chart is going to be what would have happened had we made no change, so let me walk through this with you. The first chart you can see shows the starting point of residential rates, $14.38, and commercial rate of $5.69, which I just covered on the previous slide, so that's where we start. What we assume for purposes of this example is changes to the rate as follows. The collection component, the 90% component, increasing based on the maximum increase, that 3% cap. So, we applied a 3% cap for 10 years out, annual adjustment. On the fuel component, we also just basically picked a number, and we said, let's say that every year, fuel goes up by 2%. So, 3% on the collection component, 2% on the fuel component, basically gave us these numbers. As you can see, in year 10, the residential rate is the $19.09, commercial rate is $7.55. Now, keep in mind, these are just example numbers. We don't know what the reality will be, but we wanted to essentially give you what would probably be more of a worst-case scenario, if we were at 3% every year and 2% for fuel, you know, it could go down, but that's been a pretty stable index. Now, the last chart we wanted to show you is, if we had done nothing and not gone through this RFP process, the rates in the starting section is where we're at today, before this contract is put into place. So, residential rates, $15.59, commercial, $6.14 per cubic yard. You can see that if we took this, and in this case, what I did was I took the historical CPI that we've been using, the urban consumer one, and I took the historic rates and just basically applied them across as if the past 10 years were the current 10 years. And essentially, what you end up with, oh, and I also kept the fuel component at 2%, like I did in the previous example, what you end up with, you can see, is in year 10, you're quite a bit higher, you're at $22.67 for residential and $8.93. So, the point of this illustration, even though these are essentially hypothetical numbers, is even in the worst-case scenario, on our current situation, taking out the 10% fuel component, worst-case scenario, we're still doing a lot better than we would have been had we not gone through this process and negotiated successfully. So, budget impacts, where the rubber meets the road, talk about that. There's two funds that are going to be affected, general fund, we did not make a change to franchise fee rate, it is, has been 10%, it is still 10%, so that revenue line item for the general fund budget will remain roughly $110,000 a year. We also, in our negotiation, removed the direct cost to the city for operation, for operating, the direct operating costs for the services that are provided to the city by the contractor. So, we've got a dumpster out here in the back, you know, the service is provided to that two times a week, those types of things. So, that over the entire city has cost us about $20,000 a year. So, that's a reduction in our operating costs. However, we are going to essentially neutralize that effect by the fact that we took out the street-sweeping component of the rate for the residents and for the commercial customers. We did that to get them an even better rate than we would have had otherwise, and we just wanted more control directly over that. It was essentially being subcontracted through Waste Management to the vendor that's providing that service. So, essentially, we're going to direct contract, you're going to see an agreement come back to you at a future meeting. That was, that's about $20,000 a year, so you can see the effect, that's an increased operating decrease because of the properties being covered. All in all, general fund, essentially no change, that's the point of that. Community Services Fund, we will see a revenue increase because we did negotiate an increase in the recyclable materials collection rate. It has been 20 cents per residential unit, is going up to 40 cents, so we are doubling that revenue line item for the next year, which is going to move from around $11,500 to $23,000. A few final notes on the contract and the process we went through. First of all, one of the items that's in there is what's called a favored nations clause. We're very pleased with this because essentially what it does is it allows the city, if a neighboring municipality or Brevard County were to negotiate better rates than what we have today for the same similar basic scope of services, we would have an option to reopen the contract and go after those rates, essentially. In partnership with Waste Management, we are going to put out a letter, which is actually in drafts before you, I believe, a letter that if you all approve it, would be sent out to every resident, talking about the changes to the contract. Waste Management is going to put that letter in with a couple of brochures about, that provide essentially advice about recycling and how to handle yard trash and things like that, as well as a nice magnet that they're creating that residents and commercial businesses can put on their, you know, refrigerator or whatever, that gives essentially the call number for Waste Management and the service days. So, that'll be a nice thing that'll go out, based on your approval. And the last thing is that also, in part of our negotiations, Waste Management offered to provide what are called big-belly solar compactors. They're roughly the same size as a cart, like you have at your house, but they're two, I've got a picture in the bottom right corner, they're two trash receptacle recycle bin-type things put together. I'm sure you could explain a little bit, and I can, but it's kind of neat because there's a compactor feature, and it's solar-operated, so as you can imagine, it can be out there for a lot longer without having to be emptied. Waste Management will install two of those, one at High Tower Beach, one at Pelican Beach Park, and they will service them as well, and that's no additional cost to the city. So, that was a neat feature. And the final thing is just I wanted to thank all the people that were involved in helping us get to this point. We definitely appreciated the work done by, obviously, the consultant who couldn't be here tonight, Bill Redman of Redman Consulting. We also greatly appreciated in our evaluation committee, the two citizen evaluators who helped us, Michael Chase and David Schechter, and then, of course, the members of the Waste Management team that worked hard with us to get this to this point, including Deana Ryder Hicks, George Glecko, Lisa McKnight, Tony Masoulis, and Mike Lewis. And with that, I've got on my body And with that, I've got all my benders over here, so I'm going to move over here for any questions, but I thank you for your time.
First, Suzanne and staff, thank you very much, and to the citizens that have been on our committee, um, great job. I know you put a ton of hours in this, and, uh, thank you and thank you for the presentation.
And do you have that example that we had about, um, how much, like, an impact of a commercial?
Yeah, I apologize, I did miss that.
I think, it's hard when you see a rate of like a per cubic yard to understand what the impact your business would be, so we did calculate example based on our city hall waste dumpsters and how much it would save if we were continuing to pay that service.
Yes, thank you. Um, so what we did was the dumpster right out here at City Hall is a dumpster that is a six-cubic-yard-sized dumpster and it's collected or picked up twice a week. So the rate we have been paying monthly is $371.03. The new rate will be $295.86. So it was a $75, $80 savings a month, so we were really pleased with that.
So that's what long doggers will get, you know, the, the, our business community, and that's the, you know, if there was, the service levels of Waste Management have always been incredible and, and we've always had good, you know, compliments on that. The only complaint I ever received were commercial rates, so I think this is the great, um, step that they helped us through in trying to get some savings to our commercial customers. It was, it was a great, you know, um, benefit to them, so, so we're really pleased with that.
Thank you. First, to counsel, on Huidias is a revised contract, okay? Since it is different than, slightly different than we have in our packet, um, we have just a quick overview, everything in red is the change.
So, um, if you go to page eight, the contract, the, um, contract had formally said, "The contractor shall collect residential garbage and trash on Monday through Friday only between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM." And now it will be saying, "The contractor shall collect residential garbage and trash on Tuesday and Friday only between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM." And then the sentence, "Scheduled dates of service will be at least three days apart." We moved that sentence down to the next paragraph, um, because we felt it was a better fit there.
Question, just before we go on to any other changes? What was wrong with Monday through Friday, I mean, can they do it on any other day if there's an emergency arises or so forth, or is this deal? I mean, Monday through Friday, I mean, gives them a broader scope if they had to, is that why that was put in there that way and not put in there the way we're changing it to Tuesday and Friday?
No, I, what, the concern was, was that the actual days, the service days, were not actually spelled out in the contract. Um, and so by putting that in there, um, you know, that's fine. And then we have provisions throughout the contract, if, if they miss the ser, that day, then what would happen if they, you know, had to go to another day? So that's covered in other areas of the contract. It, it's good.
Since this is a contract between us and Waste Management...
I know the question you're asking, if we have a hurricane on Saturday, but last time you guys were here all, all the time. I mean, you were, they were just all over the street, but this says that they're only going to be here, and that's your question, is if they want to help us with a hurricane...
And are you okay with the change too? Because since it is a contract and agreement between both sides, so...
Can I answer? On, on page 15 of your contract, uh, section eight, there's language that says, "Schedules and routes shall match the current schedules and routes, except that the city manager is authorized to modify, extend, or suspend schedules in the event of natural disaster, health hazard, or any other state of emergency requiring such action."
And Mayor, that, that's how I would read the change. What I read is before is when it says Monday through Friday, you would interpret that as they could pick, they would be picking up every day, Monday through Friday, which would not be the case. They're really only picking up on Tuesday and Friday. So I, I see the changes saying specifically, because they're not going to pick up on Monday and those other days, they're only going to pick up Tuesday and Friday. So that does spell out the actually what's going to happen, so that's how I would read that. And not pick up every day, Monday through Friday, because that's not what they were going to do. So I'm good with that.
Yep. Okay, and then if you go to page 10, the contract also specifies the day in which, uh, yard trash will be picked up, and then we added a very similar paragraph to talk about weekend collection if it's needed, you know, um, any circumstances where they couldn't meet those time constraints, and then, you know, in the event of an emergency, if they needed to collect at a different time, that would, they would be allowed with the permission of the city manager. Okay? When, and that language matches very closely with page 14, which also changes, um, the wording to discuss the specific date of collection for recyclables, and then also includes a very similar language, uh, what happens if they can't pick up on a holiday and so on. And those are the extended changes. I'm sorry, page 18, oh, I'm sorry, page 18. Oops, excuse me, sorry. Um, we added a sentence, oh, to discuss, um, Appendix C. Uh, we wanted to make sure the rates were specific in the contract, so we added Appendix C, which discusses the specific rates, and if you look at the back, you'll see Appendix C, which is this pretty table, right here, which has the rates, and then it gives us space to add what the rate is every year when we add the indexes and it, and the increases.
Those are the changes?
Mayor, I have...
...the city manager to sign the amended solid waste contract with Waste Management authority.
Second, I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. This time...
I just have one, one question. Um, on the, the dates and times, the times from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, is that for both residential and commercial?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, the reason I ask that is, I know some of the complaints that I've heard from citizens is there's trucks riding around at 5:00 in the morning, picking up dumpsters and so on, hence that's why I'm asking the question. Is it, is it 7:00 to 7:00 for both commercial and residential pickup?
It is, and actually Appendix A in the contract provides the only approved exceptions to the 7:00 to 7:00 timeframe, and there are, there are some commercial entities as well as some schools. And there's actually an explanation that Waste Management provided to us as to why those had to be outside of those windows. So I thought that was real helpful, and that's Appendix A.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's page 11 that specifies 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for commercial.
Okay.
Uh, this is for Deana, George, or Suzanne, whoever wants to answer this one. Uh, and it's a question I get all the time. I trim my palm trees on Saturday, pile all this stuff out there on Sunday or whatever.
So that, as of what I'm reading here, they don't have to call, or they do have to call?
They don't have to call.
They don't have to call?
No.
Yeah. If you, just tell me, tell me what I can tell somebody when they say, my stuff is, I'm going to put my stuff out there Monday, when do you think it'll be picked up, Mark? That's the question.
Right. Uh, the, the process that we have in place, when the yard waste, uh, crew pile trucks go through, what's left for a call truck, they write it down on a piece of paper, they turn it into dispatch at night, and then the route is set up.
Okay.
So typically, it should be done the next day, but you never can predict when a tree trimmer is going to go down the street and cut every tree on that.
All right.
You know, so it, it may take anywhere from 24 to 72 hours to get it picked up, but we will have the additional equipment in here to pick it up. But typically, it should be the next day.
No more, nobody has to make any more 1-8 calls?
No more phone calls.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item. The floor is open.
Joanne Rieken, resident. Um, I want to say, when I read this contract, I was very reassured, um, one that we get to keep Waste Management, because I think they do a great job, but I think the city team, um, thought of every possibility that could possibly come up in this next 10-year span, and even thought of things that I didn't even imagine. Um, so thank you all for negotiating a really comprehensive contract I think our citizens are really going to like, especially not having to call. I did want to mention that, I don't think a lot of people know about the city's portal. I tell my neighbors, "Go through the city's portal," because then the city knows what's going on, but if we're going to still have that, I think we should publicize that a little more. And then the other thing I wondered during your presentation, I saw what the increases were to the city for the recycle rebate, and I wondered what they would be over the course of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Purni, or Suzanne, can you answer that question you have?
Do you have a calculator handy?
I can.
Well, essentially, it's an additional $11,500 times 10. I could probably do that in my head right out of zero. So it's, you know...
The percentage remains the same each year?
Uh, I'm sorry, let me be clear, are you referring to the, you're referring specifically to the recycling, um, component, right? The 20 cents per residential unit that's gone up to 40 cents per residential? Yeah, so originally, the revenue was around $11,500 a year, so with the increase to that, it's going to be essentially twice that. Um, so $11,500 a year times 10 years would be, you know, $110,000 additionally.
Incremental indexes don't apply to that. That, that's a 40 cent per unit household cost to us, so, so like if, you know, however year it'll go up 3% for rates and stuff like that, that 40 cents will not, will not change.
In 10 years?
That's correct, yes.
So if the recycle industry gets more profitable, we don't get a cut of that?
Correct. That is correct, unless we left an opener in the contract, which I believe was, is not in here in the final version.
Thank you. Again, public comments still open on this agenda item. Hearing and backing counsel, any further comments from counsel?
I would just like to say that, you know, Waste Management has done a great job for our city over the years, and, and, you know, I've heard more compliments from residents, um, based on different things that have happened. And I, I do want to make our, you know, our residents aware of one thing too. You know, when we came in with the cart system, Waste Management brought in brand-new trucks to pick up the carts and dump them. And the other providers have vehicles that lift carts, but those vehicles aren't the same vehicles that Waste Management provides. And I travel around, um, in my business, and I've been stuck behind trucks that run down the middle of the road, and basically, two guys are bringing carts to the back of the truck, and I, I see residents of the cities that have this service waiting behind trucks. And we don't have that problem in Satellite Beach because of the vehicles that are used here. So when you compare apples to apples, you're not comparing apples to apples, you're comparing them to oranges. So thank you very much for the service you provide us, um, thank you for the vehicles that you use that make it easy for our residents to drive around your vehicles and not be standing behind a garbage truck.
Mark.
I just want to say, Deana and George, thank you. Glad to have you back, guys, with us, so, thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Purni?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm glad that we're able to continue our business relationship with Waste Management. It's been an excellent one, we expect that to continue. Um, I also want to compliment our staff and our, um, residents, David Schechter and Mike Chase, who helped with this. Uh, I know that you all and the Waste Management staff, I know that you all have read this for a long time, and Suzanne, you did a very good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further, counsel? One more?
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. First, thank you very much, looking forward to it.
You will approve this letter going out?
Oh, yes.
I move that, uh, we approve the mayor, uh, sending this letter going out under the mayor's signature.
Second, I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman, uh, Montanaro. Other questions? One more?
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Staff, thank you very much.
And I would make one other comment. Um, I think that, uh, our residents would find it interesting if we included something in our beach caster. Uh, it gives a little bit more information about the new contract, about the phone-in system and all of that, so that, uh, they're really well-versed in it. I think I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions on? Thank you. Move on to Agenda Item Nine, Discuss Take Action on the Resolution Results of a Request for Proposal for Skate Park Improvements.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the city council prioritized the renovations of the skate park in our budget, our current budget, 1516 Capital Assets Fund, for the amount of $200,000. The intent of the renovations is to update the park with new design features and to attract more users. We created an evaluation committee made up entirely of the skating community, largely because when we talk about skate park renovations, none of the staff understands the language, understands what they would want, so we, um, asked our, our skating community to do that. And so the evaluation committee members are John Pinkston, Callie Kavanagh, Matt Price, Josh Hudson, Ike Richardson, Cody Graziano, and Ian McOvers. And on February 29th, the city issued this request for proposals, to solicit the proposals from qualified contractors to provide design-build services, so this is a design-build project. The city held a mandatory pre-proposal conference on March 22nd, so we held that conference, and then immediately after that, we held a community ideas meeting with the skating community to find out exactly what they wanted, and we asked the proposer, the one that actually came, um, to come to that meeting as well. And the, um, one proposer that submitted a proposal was Team Pain. Team Pain was the original builder of the skate park. Um, so that contractor has submitted, uh, a proposal that, um, was due on April 19th. The evaluation committee met on May 2nd to review that, and we're very pleased with the actual design. They felt that, um, Team, the Team Pain group had listened very well to the community ideas at the meeting and submitted a proposal that they all really liked. They are requesting some minor changes to that, so as they move through that design process, staff is recommending that we retain the, um, selection committee to help Team Pain and the city finalize that design. Um, our city engineer also reviewed the proposer, the proposal, and this is what he had to say. "Team Pain successfully completed a skate park renovation project for the city of Port Orange, for which we were the city's representative for the design-build project, and from that direct experience, our team, our review of Team Pain's submitted experience information, we believe that they are very capable of successfully completing the project." So with that, we are, um, the evaluation committee, as well as staff, is recommending retaining, um, or entering into negotiations with Team Pain, um, for the renovation of the skate park.
When do we start? How far are we away? What's the, the timetable?
That's really hard to guess yet. Uh, we have to negotiate that contract, and I think that will have a better timetable in it, but until we get into that negotiation process, I'm not real sure.
Okay.
The answer is...
Questions?
And maybe Alan can answer this. You know, this, this, um, this project looks great. I mean, I like it, you know, there's those deep bowls in the pool. When it rains, and we give four inches of rain, where does the rain go that sits in the bottom of those things? Do we have to, how does it, how do you exit the rain out of those things?
Doesn't the dog dare? They're actually all sloped, so it goes out towards the dog park, actually. Not, not toward the dog park.
You've got to get on the microphone.
Oh, no.
Well, some of them, like the pool, like the pool, a double pool, I mean, that looks like a deep bowl. I mean, I don't know how water would exit out of there.
Well, that'd be a question for Team Pain as well, maybe incorporate some drains in the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know if there, if there was some type of, you know, drain at the bottom of it where, you know, the water ran out through the bottom, or what, you think so? Okay.
Yeah, those are all things that we can present in the contract, and when the, the final design sentence will be more of an engineering plan, so it's easier to see that.
All right. I'll make a motion.
I've got, just a couple of questions, first. The, the lights are adequate there?
No, actually, the lights are, um, pretty rundown, so we have, um, we are looking at presenting to you in the next budget year, a line item for the, the light upgrades. So we'll be basically asking to relocate some of them due to this project, as well as relamping them.
Question, another question on the lights. We've been good partners with the base. There's quite a few fields over there that look like they have some pretty darn nice lights, uh, on smaller fields, which would be a little league-sized field. Is there any chance of looking into getting those lights from them?
And we could try. They did not work for the soccer fields because the relocation of those lights actually cost almost as much as buying new lights. But I don't know if that would work for the skate park. We could check into it, certainly.
I don't know if you need the height for the skate park that you would need for a ball field, but if it's a P4 and there's some good lights there, it might be something to look into.
Well, the current lights, as they are, need to be relamped. They're not, the rest of it are okay. So it's not, we don't need to totally replace the lights like we were looking at with the soccer field. So we'll look into it and get back with you on that specific project.
I just, my feeling is here, we're going to build a brand-new project, basically a new skate, 200 grand. We're going to build a skate park that's going to be gorgeous. The fence and the lights, to me, as anyone who's participated in sports in the city or coached, you need lights. I mean, lights are a huge part of any activity that's done in these sports facility around here. And especially there.
Yeah. Well, we have that, we are looking at budgeting that line item. And it was really to upgrade those lights. And certainly, we're looking at LEDs as well for that. So right now, the lights are a little yellow, so they cast a lot of shadows, and it's sometimes difficult for the skaters to see in the evening, so...
Sorry, questions from...
I was just going to answer the Dominique thing. There is a thing in there that says, "There's a drainpipe to pond coming out of that pool." It's in the conceptual drawing. It says drainpipe to pond is actually in there, so...
Good deal.
It is in the concept.
I'll make a motion to approve the skate park evaluation committee's recommendation to select Team Pain as the contractor for the skate park renovations and authorize the city manager to enter into contract negotiations.
Second.
I have a motion by councilman Montanaro, second by councilman Osmer.
Would you add to that motion, the rest of it, which is to retain the evaluation, retain the evaluation committee members as advisors throughout project design?
I will amend my motion to include that.
And my second amendment also.
Thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Nine. Here and then back to council. Any further, council? Lenore?
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Counselman Osmer?
Yes.
Counselman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Staff, thank you very much. The committee was great. I mean, those guys were, let me tell you, that's how you do it. Get the experts who know that. And, I mean, if I was there, I was amazed on the participation from everybody in the audience. I mean, it was, everyone had showed up.
The selection committee meeting that was held here, their last meeting, it was, they sat on the dais, and I think I made the comment, that was the first time I've ever heard the words volcano and twinkie on the dais, because that's some of the words that they use in describing some of the features of the park. So it was clear during the meetings that we made the best decision doing that, because there was no way any of us, the staff members, could understand any of that and understand what, you know, what those features were and how it impacts the kids that are skating there. It's definitely, they were definitely a godsend for doing all that work for us, so we appreciate it.
Even though they were talking about two dogs that go to the dog park.
But...
Thank you very much, staff. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten, Discuss Take Action on the placement of the fire department's all-terrain vehicle.
Thank you, Mayor. We are asking for your authorization to purchase an all-terrain vehicle unit from Route One Motorsports, the amount of $11,500 to come from the fund balance of the Capital Assets Fund. The fire department is replacing this to, to basically replace the current unit which corroded on the frame of the vehicle. So we use this vehicle for water rescue and using, being able to transfer the jet skis, which is why it's a little bit more expensive, because it's a little bigger. So there's really no way that we could postpone that. We really would like the unit to be in place by Memorial Day weekend. And we do have a fund balance in the capital assets that, you know, definitely exceeds the $11,500. So we do have the funds to go ahead and purchase that, so we would like your permission to do so.
Okay, thank you. And Courtney, you know, we talked on this. You'll find out my answer on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I would just say, do we do any type of regular maintenance? Is it maintenance like you do golf carts from the city or anything else on these items, something that we do to help prevent this in the future or something like that? Or is it just something we run to fail?
No, it's, once we get done with them, every time we get to run off the beach, we bring them up, we wash everything off, we get it cleaned off, get all the salt and all the sand off of it. And then it gets its annual maintenance. The unit mechanically runs fine. It's just that it is literally degraded right underneath its frame.
And we found that out getting its annual maintenance. So it is maintained pretty well. It's just one of the pitfalls of the side. And we had that unit for...
Since '10.
Yeah, so six years. So that's pretty good for an ATV here.
Right.
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of an all-terrain vehicle unit from Route One Motorsports in the amount of $11,500 to come from the fund balance of the Capital Assets Fund.
Second.
Motion by councilman Montanaro, second by councilman Osmer. Further discussion from council? Here and then open this Agenda Item Ten up for public comment. Here and then bring it back to council. Further questions?
Lenore?
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Counselman Osmer?
Yes.
Counselman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Eleven, Resolution 969. Jim?
Resolution number 969, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Pervara County, Florida, supporting the initiative of the Space Coast and Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities Indian River Lagoon Regional Compact, One Lagoon, One Community, One Voice, providing for an effective date. Reading Resolution Number 969.
Resolution 969.
Second.
I have a motion by councilman McGott, second by vice mayor Breimer. Further discussion from council?
I just have one thing to add to it. Also, the Volusia League of Cities is also going to be joining this compact. So, you know, this is, this is a significant move by the communities that border the Indian River Lagoon to voice their concern as one body. So this is great.
Thank you. Further comments? At this time...
Would it be premature to add that county to this resolution?
They haven't signed it yet, so I would not, I don't think it would be appropriate until they sign it.
No, they're not on it yet. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Eleven. Here and then back to council. Further council? Lenore?
Counselman Montanaro?
Yes.
Counselman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item Twelve, which is proposed agenda for our next meeting, which is the first of June. Please look over it. If there's other additions you would like to see on it, please get with staff.
I would just like to let you know, I'm not going to be at this meeting at the other time.
Can't hear you.
I'm going to be out of town for this meeting, and I will not be here.
There are three things that I'd like to mention for this next agenda.
Are they additions to go on the agenda? Okay.
I have revised that city manager's evaluation form, so that's ready to be presented to council for your consideration. At our last meeting, we talked about, or I mentioned, that we need to try to figure out how to increase participation in the Sustainability Board. And the city manager and I have had a brief conversation about this, and I'd like that to be on the agenda so that we can discuss those options.
Number eight? Is this number eight already on there?
Sorry.
Oh, is that...
Yeah. Yeah, because we never did it by ordinance, so we might as well just do it all at once.
Okay. And then, we'd also mentioned establishing some sort of recognition or process to recognize our long-serving board members. And so we could talk about that also. I always want to handle that.
Courtney?
I'll do it.
Take a look at it and see if there's room or...
Oh, yeah. We got plenty of room on it.
Okay. Is that it? Corinne, any other?
That's it.
Okay. Everybody fine? Okay. Moving on.